Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the City Council, held Tuesday, March 18th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We have a roll call. Councilmember Bendow.
Present.
Councilmember Lester.
Here.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Here.
Vice President Fiamora.
Here.
President Finn.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Dan Creighton and Corporation Counsel Frank Decranis will now have a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We just had a nice swearing in of a police and firefighter, police officer and firefighter, which I think will help make the city safer and in a better place. Dan, will you please give us the City Manager's report?
Okay, so instead of doing the typical City Manager report this week, I wanted to give an update on where we stand with beach access controls. I did mention I was going to try to do this at one of the City Council meetings, so I just want to explain to everybody what the changes are and how they're going to be implemented. So the real reason for this is there's 38 distinct access points onto the beach, 38 different entrances. We have a problem with people ignoring the gate pass collectors. I won't say what they say to them typically, but it's not nice. We also have a problem with some of the pass, with the ticket collectors not necessarily collecting the tickets. So we're looking at just different ideas on what to do to control enforcement of ticket collections at the beach. There is an issue of pass back of passes. It's not as big an issue as some of the other ones, and then police enforcement being pretty difficult. So some of these changes we're making, trying to address these issues. So one of the first things we did, many of the booths are either on the boardwalk themselves or down at the bottom, as you can see from this picture, the two yellows are the booths where they are right now. Some of the locations don't even have two booths, they have one, but they have two entrances on, so people just skirt one side and try to walk onto the beach without paying or without showing their passes. So what we're doing is the stairs where the orange is are going to be closed off. Eventually, we're going to put showers there so that people don't have to shower down on the beach, clean their feet, and then walk through sand to get back off the boardwalk. So it would be better to have the showers up on the upper level anyway, so that when they clean themselves, they actually stay clean. The booth will be moved from where the yellow is over to where the blue is. It will allow everybody to funnel into one point where beach passes can be collected. It addresses some of the issues of people going and saying, hey, my family's already on the beach, I just want to see if they're there, and they're never coming back. This way, they can go over to the railing, look and see, and potentially see their families, and then still have to go through the access to get, to get onto the beach. So it would be a tighter, as I mentioned, tighter funnel, better vantage point, and a single point of access onto each of the locations, the 38 locations. So also with this, we know that enforcement and how we collect the money and how the people's, the booth collectors' personalities. Some of them are young, some of them don't like confrontation, some of them don't like to be told to fly a kite too often. So we're going to try to supplement the staff with more senior people, more adults. We're going to hit different groups such as VFW, retirement organizations, try to get some people that would like some, you know, additional money to work on the booths, but they will be able to work closely and be able to confront people that don't want to pay their fare. The reason we chose to do this was in '24, we did do a pilot. We used some sanitation workers, I'd like to thank them for their help on that. But they did enforce more strictly in certain locations, and we saw an uptick in the amount of beach collections we made on those days where we added extra enforcement. So we're just going to follow through with that and implement it on more locations this year, and we think it will result in higher revenue. The other, the other big thing that we're changing is barcodes. We're putting barcodes on the beach passes. This way, instead of just the yodel, electronic application that you could put on your phone, the actual physical passes themselves will have barcodes on them. It will allow us to track better over the year, how many locations are entered, how many people are in which locations, how many times a pass was used a day. All these different sorts of tracking data that we can gather from it, it will help us figure out when we need to shut down beaches, which beaches are the appropriate ones to shut down, which ones have lower usage. And we'll really, we'll really be able to use that data to more effectively provide safe conditions for all of our residents and visitors on the beaches. So the other, the other one thing that's going to be changing, which isn't really tied to collection, but we have a limit that we, that we put on people, I believe it's three, John? Three passes that we allow per household. I don't really understand why we do that, but I think it would be more appropriate to just let people buy the amount of passes that they need for the household. If the household has six, eight people in their household, they want to buy six, eight passes, we'll let them buy six or eight passes. It may, it just makes sense. And I think that it would just make everything easier, because we all know people buy two passes and then turn around and buy another two passes the next day and another two passes the next day until they get to the eight that they want anyway. Might as well just let them buy the eight from the beginning. So I think that will change. The other thing, as I mentioned, with the data collection will allow us to more intelligently figure out where we put our resources, where we put our lifeguards, when we are short lifeguards, where we put our collections people, when we're short collections people. And it also allows us now to hold the ticket takers a little more accountable. We allow, we allowed a lot of, I guess, trying to think of a good way to say it, we allowed a lot of people to get on the beach last year without the people necessarily collecting. And I get it, I talked to a lot of the ticket takers, and they explained to me why they weren't asking. And I will say, I agree with them. I know everybody sees them not necessarily collecting all the time, but I could tell you if I was them and I had adults telling me all day to, you know, fly a kite and take a hike, I understand where they're coming from. So I think these changes will help, you know, make that process a little smoother and help us collect the funds that we really think we should be collecting. The other last piece that is, is police enforcement. We have a lot of people that do get on the beach, and it's hard to find them. With the daily passes, they trade in the daily pass, and then if they leave the beach, they say, well, they were already on the beach, and they want to come back on, and I went to the bathroom, I went to get something to eat, and they need to get back on the, on the beach. So what we're going to do is issue a wristband to the daily passes, so that way, when they leave the beach, they have a wristband that's coded to that day that says, you know, that they were on the beach and they paid for that day. And the wristband can only be used once, you give your, you give your daily pass, you get a wristband, and you can go on and off as many times as you want, but it's no longer good the second day. So I do think that this will help, again, get the daily people to pay their, their fair toll for the day or the fair usage to use our beach. And it's a visual confirmation that they have paid, and it gives the police something to look for when they're on the beach. They see someone without a wristband, they could ask for their seasonal pass. If they don't have a seasonal pass, they could ask them to leave and go pay their fare to get on the beach. I think it's a good process, and it's something visual that the police can see pretty quickly. So I think that it will be a better way to do it. I think we'll be able to enforce more, and hopefully, we won't count it in the budget this year, but hopefully, it will result in the increased revenue that I expected to result in, and we will be able to offset some of the additional costs to our residents next year based on the increased revenue we get from beach passes this year. So that concludes my report. I hope, I don't know if the council has any questions, but I think this is going to be a good start to changing the way we do business at the beach.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the research and the work that you put into this effort, because I think it's long overdue. I think for a long time, we've been obviously short selling ourselves here in Long Beach with our most valuable property, right? I just want to, I've talked about this with you, you know, privately, and I think the council has as well, to point out that the wristbands are for, as you said, day passes. And that means, for the most part, out of towners or people who don't buy the season pass. So it should not have an outsized effect, if any, on, on the residents. Don't want to panic anybody that you're going to have to wear a wristband, although I've been down to the Jersey Shore, I know that's sacrosanct, right? But, and they do have wristbands down there for day passes as well, and I think maybe even for people who have season passes. So, I mean, wristbands are in quite, in operation in quite a few places, but I think it's a long time coming. Do we have other comments from the council?
Okay, it works. First of all, the idea of collecting data is something I've been a proponent of for so many years. It's just really one...
A proponent.
Yes. It's so important to know when the beaches are used, how they're used, and stuff like that, and I applaud you for that, you know? It's finally happening. The only question I have is the wristband and water.
So these wristbands will be waterproof wristbands, similar to what you see in like you go to some of the resorts. We'll get different colors with different symbols on them, so that one can't be used, you know, day after day. But, you know, say Monday's blue, Tuesday's green, Thursday's, you know, another color. But, you know, one will have a volleyball on it, one will have a shell, one will have, so that, you know, people can't just buy any kind of wristbands. But they are, they are the Tyvek kind of material, so they're waterproof, and that, you know, once you pull them off, they're kind of destroyed.
But they, they're not the plastic ones.
No, 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 because that'd be too expensive. It's, by the way, the one other, one other slight change I forgot to mention was we are also looking at what we can do to open the beach earlier. I know we opened the beach on Memorial Day, and we ended on Labor Day. We are looking now at seeing how early we can open it. I know school doesn't let out until, I believe, like the 28th of June. We are looking at, at opening the beach fully on the 19th, and then having it open fully through, through that period. And if we can get it open on the Fridays as well as the weekends, because we usually have it open on the weekends, we will open it on Fridays as well, as long as we can get proper staffing.
Great.
Mike, you have a question? Yeah, I just, again, I think information is always good, and I, and it's always, it's almost mind boggling that we wouldn't know what was our most attended beach day. We know from eyesight, and we know like how certain beaches fill up, but this data will really help make sure that we deploy the resources needed. Like if we say, oh, wow, the third week of August is always, the third weekend is, it's by far our biggest beach day. Okay, which beaches are usually typically the most crowded? Let's make sure we have extra lifeguards, let's make sure public safety is aware, this beach always gets crowded this weekend. It's just, information is always good, and I think it'll be a great asset.
Right, and the second Wednesday is cut day?
And the second Wednesdays, Wednesday's cut day.
Right.
Dan, a couple more questions. Right now, we shut the, we stopped collecting early during the week. Can we, do you think this would bring us enough revenue that we could keep the collections throughout the entire time, or?
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're, we're doing this, this year to figure out where we think the bulk of the losses are. With the data we gather and the amount of money that we think we can make out of this, we can then look at doing more hours next year. I think, I think we're taking, not baby steps, we're taking probably a big step in this one, but I don't know if we will, we will keep the people yet till like six or seven, because, because the days become long, and we're worried about burning people out.
Right, but what I would love to see is lifeguards on till seven, and especially on weekends. You know, that's, that's where we have muscle problems. And actually, the extending the season, almost everyone's extending the season now.
Yeah, the difficulty with extending season, we're having actually a problem opening earlier. I was hoping to have it open from Memorial Day to Labor Day, complete. The problem is a lot of our lifeguards are students in high school, so we don't get them until they're out of school during the week. We do open on the weekends, that's why we're open on the weekends. And then at the end of the season, we have the opposite problem, all of our lifeguards that are college kids start going back to college mid-August, and we start not having enough lifeguards to cover all the beaches.
We used to have older lifeguards, and they were kind of pushed out, so maybe if we could bring...
They went to Jones Beach.
Wearing long trucks.
Not that old.
All right, thank, thank you, Dan. All right, let's, let's get to the agenda, can't wait.
Okay, item number one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a donation for the Recreation Department and authorizing a budget amendment to the general fund budget. So this item is fairly simple, it moves money from gifts and donations into the Magnolia Center for Senior Programs. This money was donated by Harvey Reasonberg, and I would like to thank him for his generous donation to our senior center. Since only $1,000, typically, we wouldn't be asking for a resolution for this, but it did require a amendment to the budget, because the line did not exist prior. So we just, at a level of safety, just wanted to make sure we did the right thing and did a resolution for this. So if you have any questions, I do have Ina available.
Okay, we have a question from the council.
Dan, a thousand dollars is great, but the truth of the matter is, we have, what is it, according to the census, 13,150 seniors here? I'm talking over 55, not counting the people on the table.
First, I'll look at, or Mike?
Me and Mike, not it.
Okay. And we have a budget of about $20,000 for the seniors, the senior center. $1,000 is great, but that comes out to, you know, with our budget, it's about $1.52 per senior here. I just would, I know I've pushed for this before, if there's any way we could get more money, I know it's CBGB money and stuff like that, but, you know?
Yeah, so this is actually the donation from Harvey to go into that. It's, it's, it's a little unrelated, but I do hear you, we need, we need to fund seniors. I'll work with Joe to see where, where, you know, things are needed, but this one, this one is just specifically for donation.
Right, no, and it's, it's great, but, you know, most of this, I know I'm married to a senior, so most of the senior programs are already cut out. You know, people can't get into them because they're that popular. And if something's that popular, you want to encourage it.
Agree, agree.
Roy, I, I don't want to cast any aspersions, but you are also a senior.
Oh, my God!
Yeah, I know. See, you're married to a senior, why you give your wife up like that? Come on. A question from the public, comments? Okay, we'll close that one then.
Item two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Yes, please.
Hello, hello, Peggy Bots, 630 Shore Road. Well, first regarding, I just want to make a back statement regarding the, the beach situation.
Actually...
I know that's not really on the...
Yeah, no, we were just commenting on Harvey's donation and the budget movement.
That's fine, that's fine. So regards to the donation to the Recreation Center, I know that one time before, there was a comment about the roof issue, the Recreation Center. Is that something that's still an issue there, or is that, that's been resolved and that's not a concern? I know it's not the donation, but, I'm sorry?
The fact that we want to put solar panels on the roof?
Not just solar panels, I thought there was need for roof repair in general. But I also, in regards to the Recreation Center with the donation, I don't know where that's allocated towards, but like Lester was saying about the senior citizens, but I also think regarding the teens, I know that it's leaning more towards the hockey players, and maybe even not just ice hockey, but roller hockey, but there are other things that I think that maybe they should look into as well, as far as opening up to the rest of the community, okay?
I agree, yeah, I agree, yeah, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, then we'll close that.
Okay, once again, item two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for a parking management plan from the most responsible proposer. So this is, this item is to allow us to enter, as mentioned, into a contract with the selected parking consultant. We have our parking committee set up, and they are anxiously awaiting the start of the parking study by the consultant. Four bids were received after the RFP, two were selected for interview, and Desmond Parking Specialists were chosen by the selection committee. That selection committee consisted of myself, Patty Born, John McNally, Mike Robinson, Phil Rigona, Rosemary Alton...
Tyler Huffman.
Tyler Huffman.
Mike, a four bid from the Police Department, and Russ, Russell Daras from DPW.
Thank you, so, and as, as you notice, I have Patty here if we have any questions.
Great, any questions from the, from the council? On the parking study?
Yes.
Hi, Patty. Patty, the, Desmond is basically, we're hiring three or four different people under Desmond.
Hi, good evening, Patty Born, can you hear me?
Yes.
Terrific. Typically, well, first of all, part of this is, of the project is being paid for out of a state grant. And any state project where you get grant funds, you have to do your best to involve minority of women-owned businesses. So one of the subs is a women-owned business. They also, as most of the proposal, include someone who does the technical work, meaning the actual traffic counts. They're specialists to, because part of doing a parking study is you want to go out and collect data, which is traffic counts, and where people park, and how long they park. So there are special firms that do that work for them.
So I, I just, so we're talking about Desmond, SLR?
Right.
And PNM Consultants?
Right.
Is there anybody else?
I don't think so.
Because there's something called Public Works, does that, is that talking about R, Public Works?
No, no, that's another firm.
That's another firm?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, that's what I wasn't sure. All right, and they, they go under the umbrella of Desmond?
Yes.
Okay. And they have done work for us before in the comprehensive plan?
You, that's a very good point you're making. One of the subs, SLR, was the organization, the consultants, that did our 2023 comprehensive plan. And we seemed to be very satisfied with it, and we were happy they were part of this team.
That's, I wasn't sure about that. So I guess my question is, when you look at the different costs and the different tasks that they're doing, you have, you know, everything's broken down to hours and per hour and total cost and stuff like that, yet there's things that are double billed. What, yeah, double billed, like sometimes even triple billed, like recommendation development. You know, Desmond is doing that, and SLR is doing that, and PNM Consultants are doing that, and you go all the way through this, and you see that continually. Why wouldn't one group be doing the one task? Why would several groups be doing the same task?
The reason, as we just discussed, there are several groups involved rather than just one firm, is there are specialists. And the idea is that the specialists get together with the lead organization, which is Desmond, to make sure the report is comprehensive and includes all the issues that need to be addressed.
I, again, I don't understand, I mean, I'm looking at things like survey analysis. Survey analysis has two different companies working on it. Survey administration, two different companies. Survey design, two different companies. These aren't things that one company would be doing?
So I'll add to that, this is not atypical to a engineering contract. So when you have a sub, the sub reports to the prime, which is Desmond in this situation. So if you have, say, a survey, the survey will do the actual survey, they'll then present the numbers and the analysis to Desmond, who then incorporates that into their overall analysis. So Desmond will not just take their data and leave it alone, they will analyze it themselves and be sure that they're comfortable with the numbers. And then, like recommendations is one that you want all of the different groups that work together to work as a group to, you know, formulate recommendations that need to be followed. But it's a typical way in which a consultant, subconsultant agreement would work. You'd see both billing for that.
I, I, I guess, you know, not being an engineer, I don't understand it. I'm looking at things like parking facility alternate analysis, we have two different companies doing it. It's, well, all right, whatever. You say that's the way it is. You can take your word for it.
Okay, any other comments on the, from the council?
Brendan, one second.
We have more?
No, I just, this is just for design, you know, for a study. This has nothing to do with an actual coming in and doing, doing any...
Correct, the results of this will be what we utilize in conjunction with the parking committee to implement a solution across the city. So what, what, I don't want to speculate on what their solution will be.
Right.
So when we get their solution, their suggestive recommendations, we'll figure out as a group which ones we want to implement, and then I expect to implement them shortly afterwards.
And the last thing, usually when they're bids, when they're multiple bids, which I'm glad to see there were multiple bids, usually when they're multiple bids, we see what each bid was. Was the other one lower or higher, or?
The four bids, I anticipated you might want to know.
Two of them were over.
Desmond was at 141, 245, Walker was a little bit less at 139, 139,000.
Yeah.
And there were two firms that came over our budget, BFJ at over 200,000, and TPD at just under 200,000.
So the Walker difference was only a couple of thousand.
Right, but we felt unanimously that, that Desmond came in better.
I totally understand, and I totally trust you on that, I just didn't see it, that's why I asked.
And, and just, you know, professional services are usually supposed to be awarded based on qualifications and professional experience, the cost should not play into that. But of course, you know, we always let that play in.
The other thing, if I just may mention, I did check the references for the two firms, Desmond and Walker. I spoke to three municipalities for each, and what it gave me the confidence that, from their experience, and I can mention some of the communities where they worked, which had the typical issues we have, not just a downtown, but a downtown also as a destination with a lot of people coming in for the beach or the water. So those kinds of communities I talked with, and what this will do is they'll do data analysis, collect the data, then do the analysis. They will have extensive outreach, which we required seven meetings as a minimum, which means you have a meeting in the East End, the West End, and in the Central Downtown, with the businesses, with the residents, with you all, and that they will then come up from their skill sets with alternatives of how to deal with the parking. Parking is a limited availability, but how you sign it, and who it serves, and when it serves, and how long it serves, and the time of the week, et cetera. It's, it's a, it's a lot of elaboration to come up with a study and recommendations, and I have to say that their clients that I spoke to were happy and felt that from that, they were able to create a unified approach to parking, which is one of the takeaways I got.
One of the things I noticed is they're not going, they're doing weekend and seasonal studies, but they're not doing event studies. We actually have only one really big event that causes traffic, and that's, well, no, two, polar bear and the fireworks.
Right.
And there's probably not much you can do about that.
Right, but they are specifically doing it before the season starts, the summer season, and during the summer season, at different times of the day and different times of the week.
Thank you.
No, just a comment that I'm glad that between Dan has let us know, and Patty you've confirmed too, that it's, it's about having different plans for the different neighborhoods in Long Beach, because the East End is so much different than the central part of town, so much different than the West End, so I'm glad that's being prioritized in this proposal.
And this firm is sensitive to that, they understood the dynamics we have here, yes.
Yeah, I also wanted to jump in on it, because it's an important part, point, Mike. One of the key things we, we said to each of these companies that proposed was the solution, we do not want one solution for the city. The solution for the West End may not be the solution for the East End, may not be the solution for the center of town. We want a solution that works for each individual area and is appropriate for each individual area, so they know, and they, they will not be charging us extra to do multiple solutions.
Yeah, on top of that, I mean, we also have, we don't have like one major event besides, let's say, polar bear or fireworks, but we have volleyball leagues, you know, on different nights, we have, you know, different events on weekends. I mean, we're a weekend town, but we also have bigger weekends than others.
But they're not doing for events, so that's not, they're not studying for events, that's why I didn't want...
Yeah, I know, but maybe, maybe it's something that has to be included in it, yeah, right. Any other from the, from the council?
Comments from the public? Okay, then we, we'll close that. Thank you very much, Patty, thank you for your research on it.
Thanks, Patty.
And the work you did.
Item three...
All right, John, I thank you as well.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase sodium bisulfate from the lowest responsible bidder. So this item, as mentioned, is to purchase sodium bisulfate for the water pollution control plant from Tortorella... from Tortorella Autochem Corp. This was a sole bidder. I do not like sole bidders. I will say, uh, they are a specialty chemical supplier. We did have Ken, who's here, reach out to the county supplier to see why they did not bid. They basically stated the quantities here in Long Beach are too small for them to really, um, be interested. But I do, again, I have Ken here if you have any further questions. But we did reach out to the other chemical suppliers that we know can provide this, um, uh, chemical. And they basically said there wasn't an interest because the quantities were too small. So.
Okay, we have questions from, or comments from the, uh, the council? Comments or questions from the public? Okay, then I will close that.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a community benefit bonuses agreement and settlement agreement with 50 Broadway Assets LLC, 50 Broadway Management LLC, White Sands LLC, and 50 West Broadway Development LLC.
Okay, so this item allows us to accept a community benefit bonus agreement, um, with 50 Broadway. Uh, this agreement would net the city $200,000 in community benefits in return for allowing 50 Broadway to build, uh, covered parking along the east and west sides of the structure. The adjacent properties did not have any objection to these structures. And there is no adverse impact on the area. Uh, it's a significant, uh, um, benefit agreement. Uh, we expect that that money can be used for the, uh, matching funds that we have for boardwalk extensions. And I think this is a, a good deal for the city. I have Scott Kimmens here if you have any further questions, as well as our legal counsel.
Okay, we have questions from the council?
Yeah, I guess I do. So what this agreement, uh, is doing is the building permit did not allow the builder, the developer, to build covered parking. The builder developed, built covered parking anyway. And now the agreement says that the developer erroneously constructed covered parking. Explain to me how someone erroneously constructs a covered parking garage.
They violated stop work orders. They failed to see on the map that, um, on the map that, um, that was submitted to the building department. There was a red X that was marked through that portion of the covered garage. And it was built anyway.
So I will, I will add to that. They, they were given back plans that were approved as noted rather than approved or denied. They should have, you know. It is a typical, um, construction application that do approved as noted rather than just deny it, make them resubmit. However, um, I guess the builder, um, handed the old drawings without the approved as noted drawings to his, you know, his builder. And, um, and he, he, he built it. I will say we had a lot of conversations afterwards, um, about it and how it happened and why it happened and, and what, uh, should have been done and what could have been done. I will say that this, this, uh, community benefit is, is available in that area and it is substantial community benefit. Before we agreed to take that, we did reach out to other, uh, properties that are adjacent to it, make sure that they were satisfied, um, with it and had no impact. I actually think, um, looks wise, it doesn't really impact on neighboring properties. It looks, looks fairly good. Um, is it ideal? No, I would, I would agree with that. But at the same time, I don't see any adverse impact to having one story parking structure adjacent to the property on either side.
So I just heard you issued stop work orders and the developer continued the construction anyway?
That's correct.
What's the enforcement mechanism when a developer violates a stop work order?
Well, there is no violation for violating a stop work order, unfortunately. But he was summoned to Long Beach City Court. That still is a active case in Long Beach City Court, depending on what occurs with, through negotiations.
So, so if a developer has a building permit to build a five story building and decides to build a 10 story building and you issue a stop work order and he says, "Well, I'm going to build the 10 story building anyway." There's nothing the city can do?
The city can go to court and get an injunction.
So Sky, I could handle that as well because this, this was one of the things that I, I, I struggle with on this myself. In that situation, yes, we can make them take down the additional five stories that are built. And we do have the option to allow them to take down the structure that was built. However, um, the structure is not imposing. It's not a large structure. It's adverse to the area. It's not, um, it's not affecting, it's not a tall structure. It's a one story structure. It's covered parking. It's probably a benefit to have more parking than less. Again, I do not think it's ideal. I'm not thrilled with it. But at the same time, I don't see any adverse impact and I think it's a benefit to the city. And this is the solution that we came up with as a group. And I think, uh, I actually do think it's a good solution. It is not something, again, that I would necessarily want to see ever happen again in the city. But I do think that this is a, uh, a agreement that we worked on together that I think can be beneficial to the city. See, Joe, you want to add something?
If I could just echo what Dan said. Yeah, so that was definitely miscommunications and, uh, there were certain things that were done not, you know, according, uh, to the way that we necessarily wanted initially. However, if you look at the totality of circumstances and what was actually done, these apartments that are going to be ultimately, or condos, I should say, luxury condos that are going to be purchased by, I believe, 11 families, they're ultimately going to be residents of the city, right? So with this mistake that happened, ultimately what we're doing is providing some of our, some of our future residents with covered parking. On top of that, the aesthetic value, if you're on the boardwalk and you're looking over the boardwalk, it's aesthetically more pleasing to see a nice flat paved roof as opposed to just a parking lot. So while we don't agree with the way that things were necessarily done and then instead of having the developer spend 200, $250,000 to remove that covered parking and take away from future residents, we came up with the solution to, you know, take that $200,000 and provide it for the benefit of the community.
So you're classifying this as a mistake, but you, just a couple of minutes ago, you said that the developer consciously chose to ignore their building permit, consciously chose to ignore a stop work order. That is not a mistake.
It's all in the contract.
That is not a mistake.
Okay.
That is a developer. So, so now we have a developer that goes, "Oopsie, here's some money. I'm buying an out, get out of jail free card." Tell me how we're not setting up a precedent for every developer in this city to do the same thing, to say, "I'm going to build what I want and then I'm going to, I'm going to throw a little money their way and oops, they can, then, you know, I'll get out a free jail card."
I want to ask. That's basically a rhetorical question. Right?
No, it's not rhetorical. It's rhetorical because we're, we're now talking about setting a precedent where we are completely, completely undermining the enforcement at, and of our buildings department.
So I agree with everything you're saying right now with the questioning. The point is, he doesn't make the decisions like that. This happened in the field and the aftermath is what we're dealing with right now. So I agree with what you're saying, as, as you know. But the aftermath is what we have to deal with. And whether what we're doing now is beneficial to the city or doing something else would be more beneficial, that's the question.
Can I touch on this for a second too? So I think the other thing, the other thing that's important to note here too, because John, I have the same concerns that you have. I think Joe said it perfectly. If it's going to cost him $200,000 to take it down, right? And there's no benefit in taking it down in that we now have an open lot as opposed to a covered lot. If we could live with the covered lot and it still impacts him financially, the same that it would impact him as if we made him take it down. Is it better for the city to take that money as a community benefit? Or is it better to make him have it take down? He's still being impacted by having to incur the cost of what it would cost to take down. So I agree with your statement. If we were to say, "All right, here's a $5,000 fine." I understand your argument fully. But if it's going to cost him $200,000 to take it down and we say, "We'll let you keep it up, but we're not letting it go for anything less than what it would cost you to take it down." Where's the benefit to him?
John, let me, let me, for one second.
I, I think what John, and I'm not talking about this particular case. I'm talking in general. I think what John's objecting to is that there's no enforcement procedure. And I think that might be something that we as a council can address in the future. Because I, it doesn't make sense to have a stop work order with no enforcement.
Well, absolutely, but that's the his, that's the history of Long Beach.
So, so there's no parking and we're trying to change that?
Yeah, right. There's, there's still, uh, injunctive relief. You can go to the court and you can, you can stop them, uh, immediately. And, uh, and they'll be arrested if they violate the court order.
But for some reason, we're not doing that. So is that because?
Well, they, they served a, a, a stop work order on it. I don't know when that, when it was or what, what happened, uh, you know, but it's a garage covering.
I'm not talking about this particular case.
Okay.
Not at all. I'm just, if we don't, if we write stop work orders and we don't enforce them.
Yeah. Of course we enforce them. They, we would enforce them.
You just heard.
Well, they did. They, they, they held up his, uh, his, he's not selling anything. He's not making any money on any sales. It's sitting there. That's cost him a lot of money. I, I believe it cost him a lot more than probably what he's, what he's giving over here. They also would like to see it get on the tax rolls. It's a lot of money there that the city could use. But he can't, if he's like, John had said before, going to build a 10 story building. You know, if he's going up over, they're going to stop work immediately. They're going to get injunctive relief. They're not going to build 10 stories. It's not going to happen, you know? So there's, there's plenty of enforcement.
But Frank, in this particular case, all right, and I really don't want to talk about this case, but what was the, it would have been your office that would have asked for the injunctive relief?
Yes.
And so where, something happened between the building department and your office that it wasn't requested or?
I don't know what happened. Probably in the course of. In the course of, uh, construction. Did he put a cement roof over a, a garage in a construction site? Uh, yeah, he did that. How long did that take to do? I don't know. And I don't, I don't know if, uh, you know, when the work order was signed, when it was given to them, uh, you know.
You understand my point.
I, I do understand your point, but I'm just saying that, that it's not like the city is doing something here that we're never going to be able to enforce the, uh, the laws. We are.
Scott, when was this built?
Construction is still ongoing, so initially.
But when was, when was the stop work order violated?
Oh, it's been probably a year, at least a year ago now. It's been going on for.
Prior?
Probably longer than a year. And it, like I said, it's still presently a case in Long Beach City Court.
The one thing I just wanted to add was, as far as our funds are concerned with violating our building code, I mean, depending upon the section, it's either $250 per violation or $1,000 per violation. So getting a $200,000 fine in our city court for something like this is unheard.
Community benefit agreement.
I'm, no, no, no. I, I, I understand. But what I'm saying is, is if we just find him, you know, and, and in the court and then sought them to take it down, whether we litigate that, that point or not, we're not getting the money if we haven't taken it down. So pretty much he's still being penalized, if you will, because now in order to keep this, he has to pay the city $200,000 for the duty.
It goes back, it goes back to what I asked.
You're still missing my point. You're trying to sell this.
I'm not trying to sell anything.
It's a good thing after the fact.
No, that's not exactly what I said at all.
My concern is that we have now completely undermined the enforcement authority of this city. We've now made, we've now basically put a price tag on buying variances after the fact.
Absolutely not. You cannot sell variances.
Well, you know what? You say absolutely not, but you know what? I'm the one that has to vote on this, not you.
You're 100% right. And with all due respect, if you guys vote it down, I will be the one litigating it in court. And I don't mind doing that. Whatever you guys decide, I'm happy to do. But I'm here to answer questions and that's all I'm doing.
So, so the company, the company is maintaining in the agreement that the zoning board of appeals erroneously denied their proposed modification because they went back trying to get a variance after they did that. And then they're claiming that the zoning board erroneously denied that modification even though they're the ones who violated their building permit. So can you explain what the basis is for saying that the denial, um, of the as-built modification was erroneous?
I don't agree that it was erroneous. I don't agree that the zoning board erroneously denied it. I believe that the zoning board looked at the totality of circumstances and made its decision as an autonomous body to make the, to, for the denial. There, then thereafter, we entered into a tolling agreement to negotiate a possible resolution. So the resolution was, when Article 78 comes, we go to court. If we lose, they keep it. We win, they tear it down. How much would it cost them to tear it down? Let's say roughly $200,000. Okay, so the settlement was, instead of us tearing it down for $200,000, we will pay the city $200,000.
Okay, you don't need to keep repeating the solution. I get it. You guys all made the case for the, for the solution.
Okay.
What I'm saying, well, I've already said what I said. I think this, all right. So the agreement also says that the city is going to grant all necessary approvals and waivers from the city zoning code of ordinance for the company to maintain its as-built condition. So besides the covered parking and changing that commercial space to a residential one, what other aspects of the building do not comply with the zoning code that have not already been waived by the zoning board?
None.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I think I made my, you've made your case for you think this is a good deal for the city. I think I have now made my case that I think this is the city selling out the residents for 200 grand and opening the door for developers to screw the city time and again going forward.
Thank you, John.
I did not make a case.
I, I, I'll, thank you, Joe. Appreciate it very much. Thank you, thank you, John. Any other comments from Chris?
Yeah, I have a quick comment. I understand what everybody's saying. I understand John's point of, you know, optically it's, you know, hey, let me do, you know, if I'm a developer, hey, I can do this and that and I can just buy my way out of it. It's how it looks. I think in this case, the, the builder violated the building code, which I, I think by the law, the maximum thing we can do is like three or $4,000 in fines. Is that somewhere correct? And in that timeframe, we'd also have to have them tear it down, which would prevent sales and prevent future income of tax rolls for the city.
After litigation, if we want it, if we want it at trial, you know, if we want an Article 78 proceeding, yes.
Yeah, so if we won, if, if we won. So I mean, a $200,000 or, you know, four to 5,000 percent more, larger fine for something that didn't. And I agree back to what John's saying, like if I come in here and, you know, me and ABC Corp want to build 20 stories and we were told we could build 10 and we just build 20. But it's from what you're saying, it just doesn't work that way. There would be, you know, I think you said that. There would be an injunction and whatnot and, and real, real, not besides fines, there'd be real, uh, consequences to deal with. Yeah. Because I don't ever want to be, um, or look like, you know, we're selling out to a developer and this and that. I think in this case, if anything, um, I think we set a bar for if you go against the building department or the city, that you're going to pay dearly for it. I think the only thing to, you know, that's, that, John, that I feel different than you about is that in this case, I don't think it really hurt anybody. It doesn't make it right or wrong, but I don't think anybody was hurt. They covered a garage in an area between two buildings that nobody sees. The residents didn't care and the hotel didn't care. The residents who bought it, and I'm so, I'm sorry. But to what you're saying of somebody coming in here and, because that's been the, the history of Long Beach is, is people come in, they, you know, and they beg for forgiveness instead of doing the right thing beforehand. So, uh, I think it's a case by case situation, but, you know, I just want to make sure that, that that was the case that, you know, somebody can't come in and just, you know, look at this now and say, "Hey, this is Long Beach. I can do what I want." And then, you know, beg for forgiveness after that there's an actual. Yeah, I mean, because this, this case is still in court, I believe you said?
Yes.
Okay. All right, fair enough. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Mike? I'm going to make a comment. John, I, I agree with, I even agree with your anger. If that's what you're showing, I, I agree with it. But as I say, uh, we have to perhaps, I, I am personally putting my anger aside and saying, what is the benefit to the city doing it this way or doing it another way? And I'm sure you've given it some thought as well, but that, that's the point I'm making. I, I don't mean it as a debate. I just mean that, yeah, you made valid points and your anger is, is noted and, and actually probably, uh, shared by a lot of people. But we have to look out for the city and kind of bury our own pride or frame of reference issues. issues, because, yeah, that's, this is a Long Beach thing. So, we have comments from the public. Okay, we're gonna close it.
Item 5 is a resolution authorizing the retention of NICID via Series Systems Group Incorporated, Series Systems Abilities Partnership for Data Imaging Services for the City of Long Beach Permanent Records Project.
So, this item allows us to contract for records management and data imaging services with the New York State Industries for the Disabled, the preferred state source. This records management is funded through a FEMA Sandy grant. I do have Dave here, if you have any further questions.
Okay, we have comments from the council.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. It's all FEMA paid for? Okay. The, when I'm looking at this, when it says business documents scanning and indexing, 1,100,000, are those pages or files?
We have them here.
I also have, yeah, I have Rich Siri from Series Systems here.
I'm sorry, what?
Rich Siri from Series Systems. He's the vendor, but, yeah, that, I believe it's individual...
Pages?
Rich Siri is here, can answer your question perhaps?
Good. Hey, Richard.
Right there, that microphone right there. There you go. You can hold it.
I got it. Is that good?
Yeah.
So, any questions, sir?
Sure. We're looking at, you know, scanning and indexing, and it's, the quantity is 1.1 million. Is it documents, or is it pages, or is it files?
Good question. So, 1.1 million images, pages. So, a page could be one-sided, two-sided, so we scan in duplex. If there's blank, we delete the blank page and throw it away. So, you're gonna get 1.1 million images back. I don't know, I don't have the polls in front of me, but files would be how many pages a file is, right? So, if a file is 50 images, you know, you would divide that into 1.1 million, but each file is a different size. So, you're gonna get thousands of thousands of files indexed, which will include those 1.1 million images.
Yeah, but we're talking 300 DPI, right?
Well, that's different, yeah. We're gonna scan everything at 300 DPI, that's correct.
Basically, one page is pretty much the same. It's not like...
Well, yeah, each image is the same.
And it's not color, is it?
Well, if there are photos in there, we scan in color.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I don't understand why, after you scan it, you put it on microfilm.
These have to be, it's for disaster recovery purposes, and I think the state is deeming these required because they're permanent records. So, for, New York State Archives requires a permanent copy. So, we output the digital images to microfilm.
Microfilm is i-readable, so it's, it's i-readable. You could take a piece of microfilm, hold it up to the light, and read it. So, there's no obsolescence there.
Oh, you can't.
Yeah, actually, you can.
It's this size.
But I'm just saying, it's not something that will be obsolete. A lot of times with, it guarantees, it's another form of backup media, especially good with, when you have permanent records. This way, it does not become obsolete. The media stays the same. With digital, depending on where you have it stored, you could have digital obsolescence, like floppy disks, you know, things of that nature. So, a lot of times with permanent records, they want you to have microfilm. I have rolls of microfilm of my birth, death, and marriage books. I have them of some of the old tax records as well. In certain circumstances, we do do microfilm just for the preservation.
Okay, it seems digital would be preserved so much better, but...
Well, we're doing the digital as well, so the digital will be the working copies, the ones that we use, that we access on a regular basis will be the digital copies.
You have a question, Mike?
You still, you done?
No. No, I'm not.
He didn't, okay.
You know, but the microfilm is a lot more expensive, much more expensive than...
It's a specialized item, so...
But what I'm...
I'm still trying to get my floppy disks to work.
Yeah, I know. That's the way I look at microfilm, you know? It's film, and film deteriorates.
Yeah, but I think he's right. I think that he's right, that it's permanent, that won't, that could still be used, whereas...
Well, digital can always be used, and most big companies use digital. They're not, you know, they're not doing microfilm.
Well, he is digitizing it, right?
Yeah, that's, the main, the main, the main working copies.
Yes, no, digital I have no problem with. It's great. I'm glad we're finally scanning stuff.
But I think they're saying this is a requirement of New York State.
But is that the case?
In most cases, yes.
All right, and then, you know, as Dickens said, if the law says that, then the law...
Well, you're the lawyer.
Yeah, but that could be changed. But the, I guess the question is, why is, if you put it on 35-millimeter, which is basically twice the size, why is it so much more money?
Well, 35-millimeter is for the large format documents. So, large format plans compared to regular documents going on 16-millimeter microfilm.
No, I know, I know. It's 35 is twice 16.
Well, it's for a large format. It's a more expensive process. You only get, you only get by 500 large format plans on a 100-foot roll of film compared to 16-millimeter, regular-sized documents, you get about 2,500.
Yeah, one of the series of records that's in there are the DPW files, which include a lot of plans.
Okay, and the last question, is it, when you scan it, do you do, run it through an OCR software?
Dave, do we have OCR on this, on the proposal? I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
I'm not sure on this one, if we do.
If you hold on one second, I'll check the proposal. Do you want me to wait?
If it's OCR...
Not run it through OCR.
Even if it doesn't, our software that we use can do OCR on the, on the import.
When you're searching.
I'll tell you in one second.
Yeah, usually, with the way that the records are now, they're, we did an inventory already. That was the first step.
But it's gonna be PDF. They're all gonna be PDFs.
They're all gonna be TIFs.
These records are not being OCR'd. We can certainly offer that service, that's very inexpensive, but not all documents lend themselves to OCR.
Yeah, a lot of these don't.
Because of the, if they're, you know, you know, not everyone looks like a Word document, you know? If it's...
The 90% that do, it's worth it when you're searching.
Oh, absolutely. I totally agree. We do it all the time.
Thanks. That's my question.
Actually, before the meeting started, Richard was showing us, his company did work for the Vatican, and he was at the Vatican for four months, scanning books and papers, so, you could probably work for Long Beach, I guess. What is your estimate on timing for this project? Just curious.
Let's say a year, but it'll be quicker. Yeah, I mean, let's just say a year it'll take. But, you know, once we do all the scanning, then after that, we output the microfilm. Microfilm takes a little longer to do. It's a more tedious process of outputting it to film, and then processing the film, and things like that. But I'd say 12 months, and the whole project will be done.
Okay, thank you.
It's not a huge project for us.
I'm sorry, one more question.
Sure.
Okay. The cost right now is an estimate.
Yes.
Dave, have they ever seen the auxiliary building?
He's been in there several times, yes.
I have, yes.
Yes, he saw it even before we did...
We're gonna lock you in there if you're not careful, right?
The second part of this project was, we first did an inventory, and I had Richard in even before we did the inventory. We did an inventory, we did a destruction, where we went through the inventory and saw, hey, which records are past the retention schedule, and we got rid of probably about 2/3 of the records that were in the building. This is the last third that is either permanent or long-term retention, so...
I guess this is a question for Dan. Dan, if they go over, and I'm expecting that, having seen that building, does FEMA cover the over, too, or we?
I actually am not positive they do. I don't know how this grant works.
I don't, I think there's a little bit more funding left.
I think it's a fixed number. I think these Sandy monies are kind of expired, but I will confirm that, but I do not believe they do.
No, we always check, we're always, you know, checking everything we do. We can, Dave and I can certainly talk about what records should be done first, so we complete that. But if we hit a certain number, the number, we stop, and then we give the records back. Sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't. And if Dave has gotten rid of some records, they might, they won't be scanned, so the number could be less.
Thank you.
I'm pretty conservative on my quotes.
It's a great idea that we're finally doing it.
Yeah.
I am glad that you were able to scan ancient documents at the Vatican, because we're still hunting for some zoning board minutes here in Long Beach, and they may be more mysterious than the codex. Thanks for coming up here.
Bored to work with everyone.
Just one quick question. Roy asked all my questions, but just one.
But you found one more.
Since these things aren't being run through an OCR, are the files going to be indexed and tagged at least so that, and I mean the digital files, so that somebody can go in and, you know, look up a case number, or...
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So, what we do is, the first step is, we look at every record series, and each record series has its own individual file structure. Usually on a file folder, you can only index it by what you write on the folder. If it's a personnel file, last name, first name, maybe date of birth, right? Payroll records would be by year, you know, on and on, all different types of records. We look at each record series. We index them accordingly, and then we output the images, the PDF files, with that metadata, which is the indexing information, and we give it to the city, and they'll put it in their document management system, so you can access those records.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments, questions from the public? All right, thank you very much for coming up here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Oh, yeah, close it, right?
Okay. And, hold on one second, my screen has gone off. Give me one second, please.
You need to scan it before you...
Yeah. Okay, item 6 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a temporary access agreement with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation.
Okay, so this item is to enter into an agreement with, as mentioned, for temporary access with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. This would allow DEC to come in and access the property to assess beach erosion for the eventual beach replenishment project. So, this basically gives them access to survey the property, get an idea of which beaches need replenishment, et cetera, and I do have Ken here, if you have any further questions.
Got a question, Roy?
Yeah. Dan, this is the area in Pacific where you can drive right through. It doesn't go, there's no dune, correct?
It's for everywhere. It's for the entire beach. They do a survey of what condition the beach is in.
No, no, I understand, and I think it goes into Lido and stuff like that. The access is only that little area in Pacific, right?
They could go in on Pacific, they may be able to go on New York if they need as well. But Pacific is primarily, yes, where they go in.
I think in the, in the plan, you only had Pacific.
Yeah, I think typically they use Pacific because...
It was like a small mention in there, they can use other ingress and egress points.
The primary location is Pacific, but they can use anywhere. They could go in on New York, or they could go, you know, everywhere else.
And that, but that is the entire barrier island that they're going to have to survey, correct?
Yeah, I believe they're doing it for the entire barrier island, but our agreement will only cover their agreement with Long Beach to access our beaches.
Well, it's the access.
Yes, the access. Well, they'll survey everything, we'll let them access through there, but they also need to actually go in and check out the rest of our beach, yeah, beach area.
Including the jetties, right?
Yeah. I think this is just for the beach replenishment. I don't think it's for the jetty replacement. That's a separate project.
The beach, like replenishment in terms of sand, erosion, which is apparently evidently related to jetties, right?
A few areas are, the worst areas are the areas where the jetties were not built by Corps of Engineers. Definitely, definitely.
Okay. Any other questions?
But there's no work involved, right? It's just a survey.
At this point, no. It's just pretty much for the surveys, because what we don't want is them coming in doing beach replenishment in the middle of our summer season.
Right.
So, yeah, I just, I have a few. So, the agreement doesn't limit when the property could be used, or put a time limit on the amount of time they can occupy it. Obviously, I mean, they're not idiots, but summertime would be a pretty awful time to be doing that, but the agreement doesn't preclude, you know, our, the peak season?
I have to go through the agreement again, but I think they have to coordinate with us, and we would not necessarily allow them to be, you know, overly impacting, impactful of our season.
Yeah, I mean, I think they'd be sensitive to that, but...
They're aware of, like, the coastal communities and the importance of them.
Are they able to, can they shut Pacific then, if they're using it as a staging area?
No, it's more, it's gonna be more access. I don't think that they'll need stage there, because we will need access for residents. We also have a surfing group that goes there, I think, you know? In the off-season, we would definitely consider letting them...
Well, that was my concern, 'cause the agreement allows them to use it as an equipment staging area, which means we'd lose parking and things like that.
Most of it would be inside, inside the fence line.
Okay.
Remember, Pacific, you have a pretty wide area before you get to the dune, so you'd have, you'd have a lot of big staging area in there.
The other thing, the agreement allows them to remove any vegetation or structures that they deem impede their work, but it doesn't require them to restore anything they change, remove. It also doesn't require them to repair the road if they, you know, degrade the road. It lets them use it, it lets them remove things if it's convenient for them, but it doesn't require them to restore it back to the condition. Well, we don't, may not want condition they found it, 'cause it could be even worse, but...
But they may have, like, for example, they say that the vegetation in the dunes is untouchable, right? It has to remain...
Well, no, I mean, they could, not, there's no, I don't believe there's any trees over there, but they could take down trees, but they, I think, I believe, they could, it says they could take down structures, curbs, things like that.
I get your concern. We'll work with them, and I, because what I don't want them doing is taking over, taking down our overpasses or our accessways over to the beach.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
I get your concern, yeah.
That's the concern, is, like, 'cause it's kind of vague on what they can do and what they have to restore.
Very fair comment.
Well, I assume it's standard verbiage in the contract, I mean...
Yeah, like I said, it's just, it's kind of vague, so it raises a lot of questions.
It'll probably have to be tailored to specific, to our specific issues.
We'll definitely keep our eye on that, make sure that, you know, if anything that's come down, they have to coordinate with us. I can't imagine that they would just, you know, go in and rip it down. They'd probably be talking with us on a daily basis when they're...
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Comments, questions for the public? Tim?
Hi, Tim Kramer, 361, he's Broadway. You mentioned staging area for equipment, unless I missed it. What type of equipment are we talking about?
So, eventually, they'll be able to do, when the beach replenishment goes on, they'll be probably having equipment to move the piping, the pumping systems, whatever else they need. I mean, we had a beach replenishment project a few years back, I believe. So, all that equipment has to be staged to be put in place, and then have the sand pumped into the location. So, again, it would be planned with us, but it wouldn't be, it would be a significant amount of work. Should have equipment, heavy equipment to move the piping, the piping itself to be staged. But, yeah, they'd have probably a big staging area.
When are they looking to start this?
We don't know yet. They'd have to do the survey first before they schedule, but not before the summer.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Yes?
Lisa Spar, 840 Shore Road. I live just east of Pacific, and I was wondering where those of us who are going to be right near, live right near there can get information about the progress of this, whether it's the staging or further down the road.
Yeah, when the work actually goes on, I would coordinate through DPW. We have months before they even start doing any sort of work that will impact the residents, but I would coordinate with, you know, my office or the DPW office. They'll be coordinating.
Okay, so where could the residents get information about what's going on there? So, you know, just know where to park and just what's going on?
Right, it shouldn't affect parking at all, because it won't be, it will be on the beach side. But, yeah, you could still call. DPW will be able to give you comments on what status of the project is at any point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, your concerns, I'm sorry, but your concerns are our concerns as well. We certainly, as Dan already said, do not want them to be infringing or impacting our season, right? Nor does anybody else in this town, so that's the main point. I think we're getting at here, right?
No, no, I agree. I just want to know where I can direct myself and my neighbors for further information. I'm actually really pleased to hear that this is proceeding, because from where I live, there's very little beach left. The ocean comes up to the walkway regularly now, so I'm glad to hear that it's moving forward.
Sorry, it needs it the most.
And this project is of the scale that we dedicated a page to it on the website in order to keep residents appraised of, you know, which phases is going on and what they can expect in terms of impact, so...
Okay, that's great.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
That was exactly what I was going to say, that we will dedicate a page to it on the website, and as Dan said, Dan's been doing a great job with DPW going down into neighborhoods to communicate with any residents that may be affected by certain construction, so absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I will close that.
Okay, on to the voting.
I'd like to make a motion that we block vote items one, two, three, five, and six.
I second.
Motion to block vote and move, correct?
And move.
Okay, one, two, three, five, and six. Second?
Roy, Roy second.
Okay, thank you. Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamora.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
Okay, so that leaves us with item number four. Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a community benefit bonuses agreement and settlement agreement with Fifty Broadway Assets LLC, Fifty Broadway Management LLC, White Sands LLC, and Fifty West Broadway Development LLC. Who introduces the move of the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
Second.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Make no mistake about it, folks, this is a, gonna be, this is gonna pass, and this is a victory for the developers. The city is selling its enforcement authority. I'm not here to do that. I understand this developer wants to keep this thing, I understand, but this has ramifications beyond this particular project, in my opinion, and I am an absolute no on this.
Councilmember Lester.
Upstain.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes, for this situation, I share concerns, but I'm not going to cut off my nose despite my face here. This is a benefit, actually, for the community aesthetically as well. I'm voting yes.
Vice President Fiamora.
I get optically how this might look from one side, and optically how it may look from the other side. I think, if anything, this is the first time the city stood up to a developer and actually made them pay a consequence. I mean, if we didn't do this, our, you know, our fine would be, you know, $3,000, $4,000, $5,000, so $200,000 community benefit to City of Long Beach for something that's not changing anybody's life adversely. I, I'm going to say yes, but I want to say yes with, I agree with that if any developer thinks that they can come in and ask for forgiveness after, that we will, you know, uphold, you know, the law to the highest degree. In this particular case, I think it's a case-by-case situation, and this is the best we could do, or the best we could have done lawfully, is, you know, a few thousand dollars. In this case, I think it's a win for the city at 200, some, yes.
President Finn.
Ironically, I believe that most of this commenced over a year ago, if not two. I'm not sure of the timeline exactly, but I'm fairly certain that this is something that took place pretty far in the past, and I agree with a lot of what John Bendo said, almost everything, except for the sellout part. And I'm going to say that anybody who knows me, has heard me speak about it, I've watched this city do these sellouts over the years, as a kid, through life, until now. I feel that the mechanism worked in this situation. They didn't sell out, and as Chris just said, they stood up. Then we have to decide, are we going to let our ego or our anger get the better of us and say, now we're going to vote no and tear it down? And then what do we get? Right? All right, so we have a gaping hole or a parking lot with cars in it. You know, so my point is that we're trying to get something for the city residents, and we're going to get $200,000 that the city can use, certainly. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to, let's say, look at that askance. So I'm voting yes, obviously, for it, and I don't like the way it came out, but I'm voting yes for it, because I think we're looking out for the city residents this way.
Who'll make a motion to close?
I will.
Second?
Second.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamora.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
And now for the phone part.
Rajon Cruz Jr., 36 East Hudson Street. I'm not going to be before you long, just first of all, I want to say good evening to you and to all the citizens of Long Beach. My name is Rajon Cruz Jr. For most of you who may not know me, you may be familiar with my grandfather, Richard Cruz, who was someone that was very active in this community long ago. As a jazz vocalist, I've been blessed with many opportunities to share my music on many stages, performing for people like went to Marsalis, DeVell Crawford, Steve Jordan, those who are working in the industry currently, just returned from Paris as well.
What was the name you just said?
I'm sorry?
Did you say DeVell Crawford?
DeVell Crawford, yes, sir.
The piano player?
Yes, that's my mentor, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, he's pretty hot.
Yes, yes, we just returned from performing together in Paris. But my career... No, you're fine. My career has allowed me to collaborate with so many people, go so many places, and no matter where I go, my heart always remains in the city that I grew up here, in Long Beach. So with that said, I'm excited, because I wanted to take this opportunity to announce to all of you and to the citizens of Long Beach about an event that we're doing, a community concert celebration that's being held at the MLK Center, May 3rd. That's a Saturday from 6:00 to 10:00. The event is dedicated to bring people together through the power of live music, featuring jazz and gospel performances with some incredible local talents that I've been able to collaborate with, and also some celebrity guests that I've also been able to collaborate with as well. The event is a free, open to all, ensuring that everyone in the community has the opportunity to come together and enjoy a night of music and fellowship. The theme that we have for it is love, peace, and unity. The three things that I believe are essential is strengthening the bond within our community. Music has always been unifying, is something that I feel is very important to me and others as well. So this event would not be possible without the generous support of our sponsors. We have multiple sponsors within the Long Beach community and abroad. To mention just a few, the Frederick K. Bruington Law Office, I'm sure y'all are familiar with him, Brinks &amp; Barley's Restaurant over here in Long Beach as well, McDonald's, Hope Floats, Inspirations &amp; Corporations, Universal Interactions &amp; Corporations, Michael's Dryer &amp; Tailoring, the MLK Center itself, and many more people that have given to this event. So I'm hoping that all of you would help me in supporting this event to bring everybody out together, and let's have a good time that day. Thank you.
Is DeVell Crawford going to be there?
He's supposed to be, yes.
I saw him at Piano Night in New Orleans about 20 years ago.
Oh, really?
He was a kid then, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah.
He was quite a piano player, so that sounds like it's going to be a great night. Thank you for coming up here and telling us about it.
Thank you. Thank you so much, yeah.
I'll be there, that's for sure. Karen Riskin.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I have some flyers for you to see, as I always do, because then you get to see it as I'm speaking. It's two for each. Thank you. I'll get started, you can catch up. It's important for the city council to implement laws now banning the BESs, which is the battery energy storage systems, and high voltage cables to fight Governor Hochul's Rapid Act. Better to be proactive rather than reactive. And then added to that, I have that I'm urging the city council members to be proactive instead of reactive. We now have, we need laws or ordinances put in place to fight Governor Hochul's renewable action through Project Interconnection Deployment Act. Other municipalities have bans in place for the same reason. We should want them. There is legislation right now, they'll call the S as in SAM 5506, which will take away the moratoriums for the, for BESs. The BESs fires cannot be put out. These cables are not safe for our health and safety, quality of life, or our infrastructure. Now, on a personal note, I'm petrified of them getting, moving forward. As you see in one of the flyers, they're starting to, they want to start the pile drivings, May 1st. We have a very short window here, and we need to get everybody on board. And that means that, I'm sorry, not to be disrespectful, but the city council's got to pitch in more. We've got to get their names out there, and we need to get, to start fighting harder. Or we're going to have pile drivings, it's going to ruin the marine life, the fishermen won't be able to get, to do their jobs, and those who like boats, the recreation in the summer's going to be ruined. They want to put 18 vessels, construction vessels, with the construction every day. Now, again, on a personal note, I own an apartment at 420 Shore Road, and I rent it out. If they start doing this, I might lose my tenure when their lease is up, because they're not going to want to listen to this. It's right on the boardwalk. It's a perfect place. It's not going to be perfect if they have to hear all those pilings, pile drivings. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen.
Just before you move on, Karen, regarding the battery energy storage systems, I asked the staff to prepare a resolution for a one-year moratorium on them in Long Beach. They did that. That has to go in front of the Nassau County Planning Commission before we can vote on it. It is on their agenda at the Nassau County Planning Commission for Thursday. If they pass it, it should be on the city council agenda on April 1st for the one-year moratorium.
That would be amazing. Thank you so much.
I have a couple of questions and then a few suggestions. My first question would be, do we have an update on the North Park infrastructure project?
I can have someone do an update at the next meeting.
Okay. And, my next question is that it's spring, and we're starting to fill the potholes, so I was wondering if there's a schedule for a speed bump on East Hudson Street between J.J. Evans Boulevard and Riverside?
So I don't know about the speed bump. I don't know if it's been approved. I don't, I have to check with the police. I'll check that afterwards. But the potholes are a big thing for me this year. I want to make sure we have a whole crew. I've been working with Ken, our new secretary to labor relations, to set up a whole program for filling the potholes. I want to make it more aggressive this year. But I think there was more we could have done last year, and I want to make sure that we're aggressively hitting the potholes this year.
Okay, I was just bringing it up, because I don't want you to use all the blacktop before you put our speed bump on Hudson Street.
Dan, you're on to me.
Okay, hey, I got a picture there for them to see why I gave my request. My first is, can we start cosmetic work in the Leroy Conyers Park? I'm not up to that yet. The pictures aren't up there yet. The cosmetic work in Leroy Conyers Park, especially the water area, because we talked about it last year, and we said possibly this year we would be able to do some cosmetic work. So I'm thinking the water area and maybe spruce up the water structures, maybe a nice little paint job, or maybe it just needs a power wash. And my next would be, you can turn to the picture now. Is it possible to move, you see that all three structures are so close together? So is it possible to move the blue garbage receptacle back to the fence, kind of parallel to the grills?
These are all the same picture, right?
Yeah. But they're all not the same, but it's just different areas, just to show how close those three objects are to each other.
They're too close.
Yeah.
I'll share these with DPW, I think that's very possible.
Okay, and...
I agree.
The next would be to, the water fountain is very close, that's the second, is very close to the grill. And my suggestion would be if we could partially put up a fence between the grill and the water fountain. Maybe something four feet and, you know, maybe 11 feet long, and open on the side, so they could still enter, but then kind of protect the kids in case they run from the water fountain, because there's nothing stopping them now.
Right, too close to the grill.
Yeah, very close. I know we can't move the...
They may want to use the fountain to put out the fire.
Hmm, no, it's plenty of water at the structures, because it's, I know we can't move the water fountain, and I know we can't move the grills, but the blue receptacle, I think is very, it's movable, so if we can just move that on the side. So what do you think?
Yep, yep.
We can work on this?
I'll share this with DPW. I don't see these as big requests.
Okay, yeah, I don't see them either. Okay, that's it.
And I do have to bring the new group up to speed on the park, and we'll try to make sure we put a little more effort into that one this year.
Okay.
Maybe I'll have them contact you as well.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Wanda. Tim Kramer?
Hi, Tim Kramer, 361 East Broadway. Just real quickly on that whole parking roof thing, you know, it just sounds like we opened a can of worms there, and it's almost like saying you're half-pregnant.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
It almost is like saying you're half-pregnant, okay, what happened here. And I would also argue that the potential litigation from this, you're going to burn through $200,000 in about five seconds. But, so, anyway, I'm here to talk about garbage trucks, more specifically, the mini garbage trucks, the Azuzas. Roughly, doesn't have to be exact, what is the purchase price on those, roughly?
I don't have that, I don't have that with me.
Okay, I, but I'm going to guess around $200,000, I think that would be in the ballpark. Do we know how many we have in the fleet?
What's that?
How many do we have in the fleet? How many of those minis?
Ken, do you have the total number?
The mini Azuzas. We only have one?
The mini Azuzu is only for the beach. That one's, that's the only...
No, they don't go on the beach. The Azuzas, the, they're like a eight, like a six to eight yard dump, one, wow, that's hard to believe. And last question, is there any measurable downtime on those compared, on that truck compared to a full-size garbage truck? Is there any measurable difference that we know of?
I could get back to you and answer those.
All right, so in any event, I happened to stumble across this company. It's called Parkant. And what they've done is, they've essentially designed a garbage truck that goes on the back of a pickup truck. It does everything that a small, like that small Azuzu does, okay? It has a blade sweep on it. These are six-yard dumps, and when it's full, it tilts up and you dump it into a full-size garbage truck. it, it tilts up and, and you dump it into a full-size garbage truck. So
Like in the back of the garbage truck?
Yeah, it, it'll tilt up, and it just dumps right in the back of a full-size garbage truck. The, I called the company. The life expectancy on these are, are 20 years. They go right on the back of a one-ton, you know, pickup truck. We have, I don't know how many of those. We got plenty. And it doesn't require a CDL, and the purchase price on these is, is 20 grand.
Tim, can you send me that information?
Yeah, I got it right here. You know, I, I, this is a win-win. This is flat-out win-win. It's, oh, sorry. It's substantial savings over, you know, the operating costs, the, you know, fuel, insurance. I mean, it's a home run, all the way around. So if you guys could, you know, take a look at, I, I think, in my mind, I think this could really revolutionize our, our garbage pickup here in the city.
Yeah, I like it for several reasons. I, I could, I could discuss with you afterwards. I like this.
Yeah.
I'll share it with sanitation as well.
All right, cool, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Craig Fallater? Okay, thank you, Craig. Danielle DiPaolo?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
So just to give you a little backgrounder, all of you received my email back at the end of January. So here we are today in March. Just to point out, back on the week of the 3rd in February, the Buildings Department paid a little visit to Shawkren's building of 643 Shore Road. And he was given a violation for broken sidewalk. With that, on the 7th, he filled in the broken sidewalk. It was not removed, it was filled in. Neighbors and I contacted the city, let them know. On the 20th of February, that's when he had the removal of the broken sidewalk. With that being said, he has now had the sidewalks filled improperly, but he has cut out an illegal driveway inlet. We also, neighbors and I, let the city know of this back on the week of March 5th. My question, I'd love to know, and so do my neighbors on Shore Road, is that it was mentioned by the director of the Buildings Department that the state of New York states that they must go to Section 8 buildings once a month to do any type of maintenance, to inspect it for any violations. Is there any records that the city has that the board can see and prove that they are in fact going every single month? Because there are things and items that have been brought to your attention that I don't think have still been fulfilled. So I would love to know if any one of you have any of that record? Have you maybe asked for it? Or is it even something feasible to have? Because if there's any accountability, it would be in writing.
With the inspections, you mean?
With the inspections that are supposed to be once a month. That was indicated?
For Section 8 housing.
For Section 8 housing from the Buildings Department Director, Scott. He was up here, and he stated that the state of New York says they must go to Section 8 buildings once a month to check on violations and substances, to check on the maintenance of, of the upkeep. So if this is in fact happening, this broken sidewalk that was brought to their attention has been there for years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can clarify a few of these things. The city of Long Beach is under contract by the Long Beach Housing Authority to do their Section 8 inspections for them. Every inspection that's done there by the inspector is a report that is submitted to the housing authority. It's, they, it's done, each unit is done yearly. Typically, because that building had pretty much every tenant is Section 8, they're in there usually once a month. There is no once-a-month requirement. There's a yearly requirement for each Section 8 unit. She is correct, we did issue violations on the sidewalk. They went in and did a patch job that was not satisfactory. Then they went in and they did replace the entire sidewalk, the walkway on their property. They did add a curb cut that they are in violation for. They do have the right to go to the zoning board to try to legalize it or remove it. But there are violations on that curb cut that they did put in. I just said they were put in violation, and they have an option to try to legalize it through the zoning board.
Okay, thank you for the answer, and I guess we're going to have to, and I don't guess, we're going to have to talk, find out what happens with the zoning board.
They have the option to go to the zoning board.
They have the option, but
Right.
they're being fined because
They're in violation now. If it's not corrected, it goes to court, and then the Corporation Council prosecutes it, and then the final decision is up to the judge.
Okay, right.
So quick question. Where's the oversight? So when this concrete was poured, when, when is there oversight to make sure that things are being done appropriately? Because this was founded by the neighbors. Until the neighbors brought it to the town, that this was done illegally. So just out of curiosity, what's the oversight?
We have four building inspectors to cover all of Long Beach. They're out there all day long, busy. There was a permit issued. We would need to do an inspection when the job was complete. Before the job was, the concrete was even fully dry, we got the complaint, and inspector was immediately sent there. I actually went by there myself and witnessed it, and violations were immediately issued.
Thank, thank you very much.
So before you walk away, with, with the illegal curb cut, do you go after them in court to remove it? Or do you wait until they try to go through the zoning board?
Well, typically, if they are going to the zoning board, the city court will give them a long adjournment until there is a zoning board decision. Once the zoning board makes a decision, then the, the city court case will move forward in one direction or another.
So again, a developer can break the rules.
Right.
There is, the enforcement action is a, please don't do that, and not much more than that. And, and then we sit on our hands and wait until the zoning board decides what's to do.
So that may have been what happened in the past. But actually now, we don't, we no longer do that. Now what we do is when they come before the zoning board, if there is a court case pending, I advise the board to hold the case open for voting until the court case is resolved. Because even if a variance is granted for something, they still violate it at one point, and they deserve some type of a fine. But that is kind of a newer procedure that we began implementing, I would say, within the last year or so.
Okay, so this will be adjudicated in court before it goes to the zoning board? Or before the zoning board, it can go to the zoning board, but before the zoning board addresses it?
So we, right, as of right now, we don't even have an application before the zoning board yet. I, I assume it probably will go before the zoning board. But yes, you're correct. The zoning board will not vote in it until it's adjudicated in court.
So again, I got to, what's to stop people from going and putting in curb cuts?
100%, just like you said. You know what? The thing that would stop them would be the judge assessing a fine. And then, but, and then if they come to the zoning board, and the zoning board denies it, then they have to reestablish the curb cut.
Okay, so it sounds, it sounds like our penalties, seems to me our penalties are pretty weak.
I would agree.
Okay.
Well, hold on. We don't know what the penalty is.
Well, no, the reason why I say it's weak, and I'm sorry, President Finn.
But we don't know what the penalty is.
We heard before, it's like $250.
That's correct. So for certain zoning code violations, it's $250, others it's $1,000.
So here is what I would like to request. I'd like the, the Buildings Department and, and the, and Corp Counsel Office to come up with some new, with some new fines that put some teeth behind the enforcement.
100%. I believe that we are planning on redoing the entire zoning code, including the fines. I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Bourne, we have a grant and an RFP out in order to get a consultant to review and redo our zoning code? The funds.
Correct, that's going to take a long time. We can put teeth on this in two meetings with a noticing and voting. So again, I am asking, please, the two departments, go look at this and come up with some, some enforcement with teeth for a change.
Okay.
Hang on a second. Why are you taking it out on these two guys right here?
I'm not
But yes, you are. And I'll tell you what. This could be discussed in a much more, I will say, amenable manner. Okay? I agree with what you're saying. These guys are not the problem. The problem exists in this town for a long, long time, and we all know it. Okay? But we don't take it out on the people who do the work.
Okay.
Scott or Joe, I have a question. That $250, is that, it, it, let's say you issue me that ticket tomorrow, and my court date's six months from now. Am I able, is it the discretion of the Building Department to continuously give me a fine once a week, once a month, until I procure it? Or is it, do I buy the curb cut for $250?
Mr. Fiamara, you're 100% correct that the Building Department can go every day if they so choose. And they call that charge stacking, right? Ordinarily, in my experience, and our current prosecutor's experience, as well as the prosecutor in between the current one and myself, all three of us are here, by the way, the court doesn't usually love when we charge stack. So what happens is if there is, let's say, four violations for $250 each, usually they'll dismiss three and maybe set a fine for one.
So I agree with Brendan and John. I mean, yeah, there's something that has to be discussed, but this is in a time and place, it has to be discussed behind closed doors. Because if I'm a developer or whatnot, yeah, I can go buy a curb cut for $1,000 for a year. There's only four tickets written to me.
Yeah, I, I want to say, I agree with what you're saying.
Yeah, it just
And I've had conversations with you, Scott, about curb cuts in the West End, but all over town. So it is a big problem, and I acknowledge it. So, yeah, and when he says behind closed doors, i- it's a nuts-and-bulls discussion that I don't think merits being out here.
Well, I think I just asked him for that.
Well, you can't, we can't shout from the, from the, but you, you've been, you've been noted, though. You've been noted, right? I understand, no.
Your time, your time is expired.
Right, so we need to come up with a comprehensive idea about this before we put a resolution in. But that's what you want, right? And I agree with you.
Well, I, I think we are all in agreement, and it sounds like even Joe and Scott are in agreement, that this has been a long-running, ongoing problem.
Yeah, right.
And it's time to address it.
Yeah, okay.
We did pass legislation for civil penalties. I do have a case pending in Nassau County Supreme Court currently. It's a house that is borderline falling in on itself. And we, so the civil penalty provision that was passed last year, it allows for fines of $1,000 per day as long as the violation is outstanding and injunctive relief. So that was passed last year as well. So, that's kind of reserved for more
Would that apply in this situation? Or you're more suggesting that as a template?
No, no, so that, that can apply, and that allows for civil enforcement on top of criminal enforcement as well. That's something you could do, you know, both criminal and civil in egregious situations. So I do have a case pending in Nassau County Supreme Court for the civil, civil penalties currently. So that's something that, you know, was voted upon and approved by you guys, and, you know, that's at least one
So it's a possibility.
Yes, exactly. So that, that could be done now as well. Now that I'm aware of it, you know, I could draft a complaint for Nassau County Supreme Court as well.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get on this. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. All right. Ron Pagani.
Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Ronnie.
No papers for you today. I don't have a package. My package is over. So budget time, April, proposed budget, right? Coming up in April. Well, I have major concerns. I've been having these concerns since 2022. It's not like I just started with this. Let's just take the salaries right now. It's unbelievable. So salaries, forget about overtime. So in 2021, salaries in Long Beach was like $22,883,000. Now it's $29 million, $29 million and $21,000 and change. That's a lot of money. It's like $6 million in a few years. Just to throw it out there. So the paid fire department, you know, it's, it's still no permanent solution. You know, as you add the men, then time those men, they'd be making $150,000 each. So in the long run, it's going to cost you more money. It's, you know, when their steps are up, and whether they're a paramedic or not is a big deal, too. I'm just saying. You know, I always said, let them take a choice. If you want to do fires, do fires. Keep the men. At least we can save with the EMS. You know what I mean? If we had that. That's just out there. I don't want to get, you know, it's not the solution as far as I'm concerned. The general fund. Our great general fund, historic trends. Let's, let's see what happens here. Years ending in June 30th, from '21 to '25. So to run the city, you know, at that time, was $87 million in the budget in '21. Now it's $104 million, $17 million more. Millions, you know, I'm just saying, throwing it out there. This is your stuff. It ain't my stuff. Now the overtime, from '20 to '25, it blew up. It was, it was like maybe $3 million throughout the city. $5 million every year. Two of it is basically waste. It was manufactured by those two individuals who have those, you know, what do you call it? Specifications, their union. And Mr. Creighton has to navigate around them, over them, through them with cannonballs. It's not a good situation. But, hey. Now for the last, I'm going to say this. The overtime from 2020, if I may, this is guaranteed waste, these $2 million. And I'm just trying to tell you that over five years, it's $10 million. I feel waste. If I'm wrong, it's $5 million. What's the difference? It's, it's millions of dollars being waste. In other words, we're not doing, basically what we should be doing is firing, you know, let's put it this way, making it efficient. So I'm just saying, I have four levies now. We have four levies. You're going to hear them. The City of Long Beach levy, right? Super Block levy, right? The Haberman levy. And now, since it's gone on so long, it's the overtime unofficial levery levy every year. Not good.
No.
I'm just saying, listen, you got a proposal coming. I'm waiting for you guys to do something. Whatever you got to do, there's a million ways to cut some of that overtime, big. So I'll, I'll see you during the proposal, during April, and hopefully I'll be happy.
I hope you will, too, because I want you to be happy.
You want me to be happy, too, right?
I do.
And you want to be happy.
Yes, I totally agree with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our program tonight. Thank you very much for coming out. Please arrive home safely.